Good evening. I'd like to call the school board meeting for Monday, April 25th, 2016 to order, please. Roll call.
Vandy Creek here.
Halaran here.
Anderson here.
Tronson here.
Van Lannan here.
Williams here.
We have a quorum, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move any further, we got to move on. We have a couple of things that we have to take care of this evening. First of all is the swearing in of new board members that we have had our election April 5th. And the winners of the election, Mr. Paul Tronson and Barb Halaran. Mr. Dr. Haynes, would you like to do the honors? You have the listing, John. Which one are you?
We have.
At this point, I'd like to ask both of you to rise. And if you will, you can repeat the oath together in unison.
Oh, really?
Yes.
This should be interesting.
Harmony too.
It's just like a DI trick or something.
If you want to do it in harmony, that would be fine.
This is not a race, right?
Paul, do you sing? Because I don't.
This is not a race.
So, I, Paul Tronson, have been elected or appointed to the office of trauma school board. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And I will faithfully and faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability to help me God.
Congratulations, your fifth year sworn in.
Could you sign those and pass them down, please? I'll have that to Paul's daughter in just a moment here. Okay, announcement of, or we need to motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Announcement of executive session. According to Wisconsin statute 19.851(c), an executive session will be held at the end of the meeting for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In accordance with Wisconsin statute 19.851(b), an executive session will be held at the end of the meeting for the purpose of considering dismissal, demotion, licensing, or discipline of any public employee or person licensed by a board or commission or the investigation of charges against such person or considering the grant of or denial of tenure for a university faculty member and taking a formal action of any such matter, provided that the faculty member or other public employer or person licensed is given actual notice of any evidentiary hearing which may be held prior to final action being taken of any meeting at which final action may be taken. The notice shall contain a statement that the person has the right to demand that the evidentiary hearing or meeting be held in open session. At this time, we're going to election of officers and board appointments, committee responsibilities, and assignments. Election of officers, Dr. Haynes.
Okay, we're at the time of the year where we're approaching another upcoming school year for board member service. And it's typical that we reelect our officers. So at this point, I will ask if there are any nominations for the office of president.
Make a motion that we elect Jay Van Lannan.
Okay, we have a motion for Jay Van Lannan. Are there any other nominations for president? Are there any other nominations for president?
I'm just gonna make a statement here real quick. As I am stepping down as president right now, I appreciate the board's support in all of this. But I'm coming into the final year of my term. And I just think that it's time for we make some changes, so I appreciate that, though.
Okay, we have a nomination on the table for Jay for president. Do we have a second for this nomination?
Second.
We have a second by Brian. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Congratulations, Jay, as president. I'll turn the other officers over to you, Jay.
Okay, next would be the vice president. Are there any nominations for the office of vice president?
Make a motion that we appoint Brian Vandy Creek.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations? At this time, we'll vote for nomination of Brian as the office of vice president. Do we need a second on that?
Yes.
We have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next office position is clerk. Are there any nominations for the office of clerk? It's an easy job.
I know, I've hosted before.
Make a motion that we appoint Barb Halaran as a clerk. I'll second.
Look at her all laughing.
I did that for like nine years. Okay, we have a nomination in a second for Barb to be clerk. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? So at this time, we'll vote for the nomination of Barb Halaran as clerk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're good?
Yeah.
At this time, now the nominations for the treasurer. Any nominations for the treasurer?
I'll nominate Paul Tronson.
We have a second on that?
I'll second it.
And do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, at this time, we'll vote for nomination of treasurer for Paul Tronson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I think that leaves one position left for, we don't have to vote.
No.
And Brian would now be the at-large member.
Me and Mark.
I'm sorry, Mark. Okay, next is H2, our board appointments. For graduation this year, we're gonna be doing something unique. Do you want to go through that, Brian, or Mark?
The alumni association has been putting together, last year was our kickoff, the 50th year anniversary of the school district. And we had the big anniversary party at DeFauvy Park last August. And one of the things that we approach the senior class with is that we want to have all 50 years of graduating class represented at this graduation. So we are having all representative from the last 50 years walk at graduation. We're gonna have them cap and gallons and everything. And my proposal was to have all of the graduating school board members distribute diplomas this year as well. Barb, I'm sorry, but that's only there's four.
I'll sit back out.
You're more than welcome to come up and walk with us and everything, but...
She's a retired teacher.
Yeah.
Does that count for anything?
Yes, but only alumni are walking right now.
I'm seizing it, that's fine.
I'm proposing that the four of us that have, that are graduates also all be up there as we get a graduation this year.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Can you talk about wearing the gown?
Yep. So it's gonna be a very unique graduation, not a lot. This has not been done before. It's gonna be kind of a fun thing. And I think that Mr. Nelson is on board with it and the whole senior class, I believe, as well.
Okay, so the next graduation would be the eighth grade graduation. That's Tuesday, June 7th at 6:30. Would generally like to have one person be there?
I can be there.
I can try to be there as well.
So...
If you don't mind too.
No? You're okay with that?
So what do you... We usually just take, we make a motion on this or not, or just...
No, I just think it was all informal.
Next would be our fifth grade graduations. Valley View is Friday, June 3rd at 1:30. And Pioneer is Thursday, June 2nd at 6 o'clock.
I could attend Valley View's.
I should be able to attend the 6:00 p.m. one at Pioneer.
Okay.
I could also be there, too.
At the Pioneer one?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. And then D, the WASB convention, which is our state school board convention, January 18th through the 20th. Mark and I went last year. I don't know if you guys can get off of work for that. It's a...
I commit to that right now, but maybe, I can give a maybe.
Because I would go again.
I'm a maybe out there also. I mean, usually what I was, with serving on the committee that I did last year for WASB is they usually wanted two-year commitment, so I might be there anyways for that, but that's...
Yeah, and if you want to be delicate, that's fine.
Yeah, because that'd be there, that's what we're doing is putting those forward.
Yeah. And E, the CISA 7 meeting, which is Wednesday, May 11th at 6:30.
You should look at that to the new board member, don't you?
Yes, we have been asked.
I was gonna say, I'm...
It's an initiation or something.
That one we may have to vote on after, doesn't it?
They have great food there.
Yeah, they're really good food.
Oh, they do? Okay, I'm in, then.
I'll get you the information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now on the I, establish board meeting in time and place. One is our annual board meeting, which this year is July 25th at 6:00 p.m. at district office. Are we, do we establish it for next year? We don't establish it until then, right?
Until then, correct.
Okay. And there's no discussion about that, that's...
That's already decided, predetermined, right there.
For our regular monthly board meetings, we have two options to discuss. First option would be moving our meetings to the second Monday of the month rather than the fourth Sunday of the month because of the fact that we've always had to move our November and the December meetings because of Thanksgiving and Christmas. By, and spring break, yes. If we go to the second Monday of the month, the only ones that we would have to move would be the October 24th one, that's to certify the levy. And then our annual meeting this year. Now, our annual meeting this year, we could set it up so next year it could be the second Thursday.
Yeah, because we have to already determine this in last year's annual meeting. We can't change this date, but we can change it for 2017.
Okay, and that's option B, I'm sorry. But option A would be leaving it as a fourth Sunday.
Monday.
Fourth, Monday. And then we would have the first, our next meeting, which would be May 9th, would have to be changed. And then the Christmas and the spring break would also be changed.
Well, I got a question. I guess administrators and everything, does that, does it screw you guys up as far as your reports and stuff that you do to us, or any way, shape, or form?
The one thing that I consider when I hear that is hoping enrollment projections have to be approved by February 1st. And if we're doing it on the second Monday of January, that might be a little tight to get all that information together. I don't know Keith, how you feel about that?
It's an estimate either way. We just have to be conservative in our estimate. So I don't think that's a major issue. I think approving it by the day we do, we're guessing at that point so much anyway. Couple of weeks isn't gonna matter.
Anybody else?
I don't know if it works for me.
Neither way for me as well.
And this would start after the annual meeting anyway, right?
No, it would be starting May.
May 9th.
Oh, okay.
The meetings that were occurring tonight start...
Start May 9th.
May through April next year.
Gotcha.
And you have to remember that traditionally, we've done two meetings a month. So we've, you do have that ability open if we do need to have a second meeting. And then now we push it to the fourth Monday of the month.
Okay, either way. I mean, when we discussed this, Jay and myself and Brian, I mean, we threw it out there as an option because we were switching so many meetings. It's like, well, what happens if we go to the first meeting, first Monday of the month as well? And it doesn't, we've only got to change basically two in this year, but next year potentially could be one maybe.
There's a couple of them, there's about three of them next year. But the option B is more consistent for the public to remember and for us. If it really, if there's a... To me, that's the advantage. The other choice you have is we just have to bump around the other ones with option A. I think option B keeps it more consistent throughout the year. And it's a little easier for the public to remember and for you, maybe, in terms of planning. It's really whatever your desire is.
And I don't know why, remember why we chose the fourth.
It's supposed to be the second and the fourth, you know, so either, I mean, that's what we used to have a few years ago. Then we went to one meeting a month instead. So they're a little bit longer meetings now, but they don't have that one day.
Right. You guys are all okay with that?
Yeah.
Do we have to vote on that?
Vote on option B?
You have to vote with your motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we go with option B, first Monday or second Monday of everyone.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can you make a motion, even though the annual meeting has been determined, it still has to, you have to make a motion that everybody understands it's on this day. This is the meeting, we have to do the annual meeting. If you just understand it's on this day.
A second motion, just verifying.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we have the annual meeting on July 25th, 2016, at 6 o'clock here.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Jay, citizens and our delegation. Is there anybody here that wants to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Not on tonight's agenda? Nothing? Okay, we will go J2, student presentation, Parkview Middle Schools.
Tonight, our peer mentor group is going to be sharing some of the amazing things that they have been doing in the classrooms and the hallways at Parkview Middle School. This peer mentor group started with an Allies in Autism grant that was awarded to our special ed team last year. Was the first year of the three-year process. And they work with the autism consultant, Elizabeth Langtow. She visits them at school and they also meet her at conferences throughout the year as well. As I said, this is year two, and the peer mentor program is one of the amazing results of the Allies in Autism grant. Positive, positive results. These young people behind me are transforming our classrooms and our hallways and our cafeteria at Parkview Middle School each and every day with the relationships that they are building with one another as well as with the special ed staff. We have three members of our special ed staff here in the front row, Renee Wills, Chrissy Kumhala, and Brittany Sheehy. And Vanessa Tallis is going to be speaking and introducing each of our students. She has put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this program and is very proud of what it is becoming, as are Mr. Carter and I and all of the teachers at Parkview. So they will introduce themselves and tell all of the great things that they're doing at Parkview.
As my heart is beating. So as Mrs. Sutsak said, we are the Peer Mentor Club. Each person is going to kind of share about our background, how we got started. It all started actually with Vincent last year. And the ladies will tell you a little bit about that. But something cool that Vincent did this year was that he participated in forensics. So my classroom kind of has two doors. And Mr. Melberg, who runs our forensics, has listened to Vincent. He's very into TV stations right now, news stations. And he has this awesome broadcaster voice. And so he said, hey, how about we try forensics with him this year? So we were like, okay, let's try it. He, Mrs. Sarah Hersher, who is our speech pathologist, along with his parents, Bobby and Mark, and I worked together. And Vincent participated in forensics, knocking it out of the park, earning blue ribbons in his different categories. So he's actually going to introduce us and tell you a little snippet that was in one of his broadcasts. So come on up, Vincent.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Perrin, and I attend Parkview Middle School. I would like to talk a little bit about a mentor mentee program that special education teacher Vanessa Tallis has plenamented at Parkview. Mrs. Tallis says that the program has been incredible success in the first official year. There are 10 mentees students and 27 mentor students who have worked together in classes daily and come together once a month after school for fun activities. Mrs. Tallis says that the students really enjoy working together and have developed some real unique relationships. Even teachers are reporting what a difference the peer mentor program is making in the classrooms. It seems as though peer mentor clubs are the way for the future and are a great way to make some positive changes to make sure everyone is included in classrooms. I know I like it!
Okay, so who are we? We're a group of 33 mentor students and we're trained to assist nine mentors, mentor students on autism instruction in the classroom.
So it all started with Mr. Herzog's class. Ms. Langtow, the CESA autism consultant, gave us tricks on how to help Vincent in our science classroom with Mr. Herzog in the second hour.
Ms. Tallis and Ms. Graves decided to trial a peer mentor club. Mrs. Langtow trained a group of seven students for four students.
This is our original peer mentor club.
So now what? The special, the special education team thought it was something special, so they have to plan on how to expand it and make it better and bigger. Warrant targeted students, more mentors, and front end after school.
Thank you to the Schwab Non-Education Foundation. Ms. Tallis applied for a grant and was awarded $500 for our after-school social gatherings every month.
Okay, so how do we get in? We have to fill out an application. We have to get three staff members' signatures for recommendations. We have to get a parent signature, and we have to answer leadership questions.
Feed us pizza and we will come. Training is led by Ms. Tallis and Ms. Graves. Some of the things we talked about is, what is autism? What are the common traits of people on the spectrum? How to help support students in the classroom? And we had a pizza party with our mentees.
Our lunch and learn meetings, we meet once a month with special ed teachers and we talk about what, and we talk about things that are going well and the things we are stuck on.
Where to now? Emily, Abby, Kenzie, Mrs. Tallis, and I, Ms. Sutsak, are headed to Appleton on May 5th to receive the challenge award that includes $2,000 waived for our program.
So just a little bit behind that, back in, was it November? Dr. Haynes had forwarded Chris an email about a grants opportunity for this challenge award. And it's for innovative programs that are helping reach students inside the classroom, outside of the classroom, up and coming, kind of one, two years old. So we decided to apply and we got the call in February that we were one of, I want to say seven? Five districts, seven districts, something about there, that won a $2,000 grant. So we get to go down next week. Dr. Haynes is accompanying us, too. So it'll be a lot of fun and we have, yeah, really, just will open up a lot of opportunities for our program.
Our after-school gatherings are a chance to get together once a month outside of the classroom and have fun.
So one of our first meetings, we did board games. And then in December, we had fun and we made gingerbread houses with our mentees.
We also played minute-to-minute games.
We also planted like flowers and plants into a little pot. And we drew on it with Sharpie, like quotes and nice things about like how peer mentors have changed.
And we did open gyms with a bunch of different fun activities. And we had ice cream party after that to celebrate Autism Awareness Month.
Okay, so last year in second hour science with Mr. Herzog, we had Vincent in our class. And last year, it was throwing, screaming. And like this year, when you see Vincent in our classrooms, you see that he's had like a big change. And it's like amazing to see him every day and work with him because you've seen how much he's grown from last year to this year.
Okay, so do you know just like pictures of what we do after school? Most of our after-school activities.
Always gingerbread houses.
So why have you guys joined? What, what do you get out of this?
Friendships.
Yeah.
You really create a really good bond with all the mentees. And it just makes you happy to know that you're helping someone. And it's a fun way to interact with other people.
This also teaches other kids that like aren't in this group how they can interact with other kids with autism.
And as Ms. Tallis said, from us going on to the whole school, we created a big wave, which means that like we started off. And now, as you look around the school, you can see that so many people are helping Vincent and other our mentees that aren't even in the program.
Yeah, like last year, people who wouldn't even want to talk to Vincent now want to be part of this program. And they want to help out, not just Vincent, but other people on the spectrum.
All right, I know you. Thanks for the question. The peer mentor program is a great program because it teaches us some really great skills that we can use in our community as well as in our school. We also technically aren't like mentors. Like in social studies, fourth hour, me and Abby are in that class together. And we have two mentees, and their names are Paige and Seth. And they are wonderful. And like, there's this kid and he helps out with us. And he didn't really, he, he did get offered the name of peer mentor, but he really didn't want to be that because he wanted, he didn't really want the name peer mentor. But we always tell the kids that we're not really their peer mentors, we're like their friends. And it's, you can see the huge change.
Which was like interesting to me and Jalen because when he like turned it down and he told Jalen and I, and he was like, well, I don't want to do that because I know that the kids are gonna label me as a peer mentor. And some of our kids on the spectrum, they think, oh, well, since you're a peer mentor, you're just here to boss me around. Like, that's not the point that we're trying to get to. We're trying to get to the point where like, we want to be your friend. And like, we want to be there to support you and help you learn in the classroom. So that's why me and Jalen were very interested when he turned it down and when he said something like that. So we thought that that was very big.
And something else really cool is that our program is getting, it's kind of being known in our area. We actually had a teacher from Brilliant come and shadow these amazing students right here. We have, at our last autism meeting, Depier came and approached me and asked if they could possibly come in and shadow us for the day as well. So Elizabeth has been kind of bragging about us and giving our names out there. So we have other districts that want to see the really cool stuff that we are doing at Parkview, and they want to implement it. In fact, Brilliant just started their program two weeks ago after they came and shadowed us.
It's almost time for families.
We choose to have fun and our...
We do have fun. It's not just the kids.
A note that I'd like to add is last year, when...
A note that I'd like to add is last year when Vincent and a couple other students were new to Parkview, and Mr. Carter and I were not familiar with them, a few of these young ladies assisted us. Like, we went into their science classroom and we asked for their help because they had been going to school with Vincent for so many years. They were able to help us learn how to work with Vincent better and what works with them and what doesn't. So, they've helped us more than they realize since they've started this program.
And it's interesting to go back and look at like our yearbook photos. Like, I didn't notice until last year that actually Vincent was in my kindergarten class. And like most of us, we had our mentees in like our classes in third, fourth, all the way back to kindergarten, which is actually pretty amazing. So, we've been friends with them since when we were really young.
So, that's it.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have a statement to make. You know, I have a niece, and when she was in high school, she helped students that had different types of problems in learning. And then, when she went to college, she didn't know what she wanted to do, and she decided to be a teacher. And then, from being a teacher, she became a special needs teacher. And now, she's a teacher in Minneapolis, and she has a full class of children with autism. So, I wonder how many of you will go that way.
I want to, I know that.
Well, you're amazing. Good job. That's amazing.
Great program.
I also just want to give a shout out to Mrs. Tallis and to Mrs. Lampert and the many people in our district. Plates are full and to all the teachers that are here that contributed to the success. You said you made a little wave. From what I've been hearing all year, you've created a big wave at Parkview. In fact, now we're talking about what can we do to launch this at the high school level with some other initiatives. But I want to say thank you. Plates are full and there's a lot to do in education. It takes special initiative and drive for somebody to fill out a grant. If everyone, anyone's ever submitted a grant, that's a lot of work, burning the candle probably late at night to submit, and you're not sure what will happen. And we had a number of people go forward to write grants and to secure the money and funding to allow this to even happen. So, students, you did a great job tonight, and thank you, staff, for all the initiative that you're taking. It's awesome.
I actually have a quick, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but maybe both. Is there, is there a list of these type of things somewhere for like these type of programs that we have in Ashwabanon? I mean, I said it last time, you know, the more I come here, the more I'm like, I didn't even know about this stuff. I mean, this is just unbelievably awesome thing that we do here. And I go, if I'm going to look for recruiting people for the open enrollment, because that's what I'm here for, is, I mean, to say, "Hey, go check out the website. Click on this link and you're going to see these programs that other school districts don't offer." So, if we had something on the website that would highlight stuff like this and other things I hear about every single time I come here, I just, I just think it'd be a-
District highlight or unique programs or something?
Something that would separate, you know, something that shows how different we are. Yeah.
You know, we highlight things like that, James, in the district newsletter and things like that, but to actually have a list on the website, that's something we can talk about as far as a unique category. Why not? It's a good suggestion.
It was interesting, over the weekend, we were doing a rummage sale. We were talking about that earlier, and I had a parent that is a open enrollment parent that brings their kids from over on the east side of Green Bay. And I don't know how we got on this topic of the schools. I think I might have asked her kids what grade they were in and if they went to Valley View or where they went. And she told me that she had a special needs child at Valley View, and what a wonderful experience they had. And she, and she commented how she was really looking forward to moving him to Parkview for middle school. So, programs like this, you know, just reinforce their decision to come to Ashwabanon for schools. So, it's a good thing.
Now, I just follow, do you guys ever bring them into like younger grades? Like, do you ever bring the mentors?
Well, it's pretty new. We got it yet. But it's amazing, though, that kids will come up and pull me aside and say, "I have a question about such and such." And then all of a sudden, they'll say, "What do we do with such and such?" And I'll be like, "We'll talk to Mrs. Lola." And they are just, it's amazing. And we don't say it all.
I know they're starting to look at some of the elementary schools.
Good.
And Elizabeth already goes to talk to the elementary, and she listens to this.
Nice. Yeah.
I, the grant that pays for Parkview, it's a three-year grant. So, next year, what we're looking at doing is expanding Elizabeth's time. So, she will be working at Valley View School as well a number of hours. And then, we're going to have another consultant who works in the same group, because Elizabeth unfortunately can't fit all of our schools, but she's going to be working with Cormier School and hopefully Pioneer, if I can bring staff on board with that too. So, then we'll have something in all of the buildings. And it would be really exciting because some of the Valley View staff really want to start this peer mentoring program. So, I know the Parkview staff is excited if it starts at Valley View, then hopefully love to Parkview, and it just, it just grows. It's very exciting what they've been able to do with it at Parkview and all of the change. Because it's been a hard process for the Parkview teachers. I mean, when I first presented them with this, they were like, "Are you kidding?" They were a little worried and apprehensive, but I think, I think all of them would say, now that they've been through it, and this is their second year, they're like, "This is the best thing we've ever done with these kids." It's pretty exciting.
I think that, I don't know, you're probably already doing that, but the lesson plans, like the things they're doing after school and stuff, I think that's gold. I think you could publish that.
And we just kind of brainstorm at meetings and say, you know, what should we do now? Yeah.
I've been here, I teach sixth grade too, and I had just gotten a new seating chart. And I kind of forgot about the peer mentoring thing when I was arranging seats. And all of a sudden, I had two girls come up and say, "You know, we're both peer mentors and we think we best, and one of us sat next to this kid because we could help." And it's that awesome how, really, these sixth graders are, you know, taking initiative to figure out where they should sit that'd be best for, for the students and the, you know, which is, it was awesome.
And it's not only seats. I mean, they, they come to us to brainstorm because they have tough days with them too, you know, and so it's neat that they want to do that. They want some new seats. Sometimes they like a little break then. No.
Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the regular meeting held Monday, March sixth, March fourteenth, the scheduled checks written March ninth through April eighteenth, staffing, retirement request from Barbara Dolan Wallace from her full-time fifth grade position at Pioneer, resignation of Charlene LaRizern, I'm killing that name, Laura LaRizern, from her full-time language arts position at the high school, the hire of Melissa Kirst to the 1.0 FTE Globe instructor position at Pioneer, and then we have five other positions, the new hire of Kerry Loman as a full-time head cook at the Valley View, the hire of Keela Ghost as a noon duty supervisor at Pioneer, the hire of Laura Roel as a part-time .29 FTE cashier in food service at Parkview, the hire of Jeannie Byer as a noon duty supervisor at Pioneer, the hire of Michelle LeClaire-Muller as a breakfast supervisor at Pioneer, and the hire of Barbara Machi as a noon duty supervisor at Parkview Middle School. And then, we also have two co-curricular contracts submitted also. Do we get a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I propose. Motion carries. Let's move on to L, superintendent's report.
All right, just a couple of things to highlight. Every four years or so, the district undergoes a very extensive food service audit. And I just want to give a shout out to Betsy Farah. After reading the summary results of the audit and a ton of work and a lot of reports that have to be timed and completed by Betsy, they just had a lot of really good things. They highlighted her organization, the great job she's doing. What comes out of the whole audit clearly for us is that she just has a knowledge to know the details in terms of balancing the free and reduced lunch counts and abiding by some pretty complicated standards now to meet the nutrition requirements. So, congratulations to Betty. And it's one of those things that a lot of people throughout the whole district, obviously, they have no idea what really goes into completing an audit like this. Two people come on site, they interview people, but in advance, she prepares all kinds of different reports that have to be, they're pretty picky about it. So, I just want to give a shout out to Betsy. It was a real nice, a positive compliment to her, and it's always nice for Keith and I to get reports like that, that, you know, a whole lot goes into, in just addition to the audit. And then, you know, this last week, we, I think it was banquet awareness week or something, we had a number of appreciation banquets. I want to give a shout out again to the Golden Apple Award winner. We had Golden Apple as well as Herb Cole Educator Recognition Banquet. Congratulations again to Chris Scogg, Teachers of Distinction, Francine Cook, and Cassie Verns. And the Herb Cole recipient this year was Kathy Kowaleczek. So, congratulations to all of them. We also had seven people retire this year, and that recognition banquet was last week. That's Allison Begons, Barbara Dolan Wallace, Debbie Freidel, Joan Gilbert, Deb Hocking, Kerry Larue, Mara Manning, and Angela Salamon. I totaled up all of their years. That's a total of one hundred and eighty-seven years serving students here in Ashwabanon. I was meeting with Paul, kind of prepping him for our board service earlier today. And one of the things that I always like to share with our new staff when we do the orientation in the summer, I like to, you know, keep tabs with Jody, what is our average tenure here in Ashwabanon? And it tends to be right around the twenty-two year mark, which these individuals, it's kind of interesting to look at. I think the lowest was fourteen years, and then, I don't know, who was it? Debbie, I think, was over forty years, forty-two years or something like that, which is pretty incredible. So, it says a lot about the people and the culture here, and congratulations and thank you for all those years of service. And my last highlight here is, is an extremely fun accomplishment to highlight, and that's the Parkview Destination Imagination Team. They call themselves the Bean Shot, let me see here, Bean, Beans of Jolly, Beans of Jolly. Moving on to the global competition, do you happen to know off the top of your head what that global is? Is that end of, end of May?
Labor Day weekend or Memorial Day weekend.
Memorial Day weekend off to Nashville. So, congratulations to the coach and to all the advisors that pulled on that rope. Pretty neat accomplishment. Any other questions for me, comments?
I, there was some, some talk, I know it's this time of year, and I was talking with Mr. Nelson, and I know that the Department of Public Construction has been talking about, I'm switching from the requirement for the schooling that a student needs from one hundred and eighty days to fourteen hundred minutes or something like that. Have you guys been talking about or discussing about possibly wanting to extend the school day, like maybe adding eight minutes on to the end of the day? Like, like for example, like at Ashwabanon High School, like having, instead of having them end at two forty, having them end at like two forty-eight? Have you guys been discussing that at previous meetings by chance?
Patrick, we have an agenda item coming up. It has to do with teacher learning or staff development, and that is something we'll probably talk about a little bit later on our agenda.
So, that'll be coming up a little bit later. Because I know Shawnee Communities are, they're talking about doing that as well. I didn't know what the heck was going on at that.
Okay, let's move on to M1, the Bo Metler Campaign Kickoff. Brad?
I'll just do a quick introduction of the, the real guys you want to talk to. Tom Barnhart, Dave Stroud. I don't know if Patrick's going to join him or not, but- That's why he's here, right? Oh, boy. Anyway, Thursday, May twelfth, we're having a Bo Metler Innovation Center Capital Campaign Kickoff. And I'll let Tom and Dave talk about that in further.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. So, we've been talking for a few years now about adding a big manufacturing element, engineering element to our, to our tech ed department at the, at the high school. And so, we've really pulled everything together with the help of Brad, with the help of Barbara Caldos of Somerville Architects, and with the help of Anne Franz of the N E W Manufacturing Alliance. We've basically pulled together the effort to start a capital campaign kickoff on May twelfth. And I believe we sent out an invite to all the school board members, so, so this is what that's about. Yeah, awesome. So, say this, what this event is gonna, is gonna be like, is we're gonna have some brief speeches from Mr. Haynes. We're gonna also have the president of the W T E A Wisconsin Tech Ed Association speaking, the director of career and technical education, Brett Kindred is coming up to speak, and also some members of our advisory board, all talking a little bit about, you know, validating our cause and why, why this type of education is so important to our community here in Ashwabanon and why, why this innovation center is just so needed. And then, the big, the big celebration point are going to be two things. First of all, it's, it's the Bo Metler Foundation, which has been the real spark that lit the fire for this whole initiative, helping with a huge donation of a CNC machine that we installed in October, which has just been terrific, hasn't it, Pat?
Yes, I actually got to use it once. Well, barely.
So, okay, but at any rate, yeah, so Pat's been a big part of that, just in the camaraderie around it at least.
I guess so.
So, but yeah, so we're gonna have, we're gonna bring some recognition and some, some attention to, to just that, that effort, harness the spirit of what the foundation has done for us and try to generate some enthusiasm and other possible donations and, and people that want to partner up with us. But the main event, the main showcase, we are going to have forty students from, all the way from the high school, from Parkview, from Valley View, all being celebrated there with their, with their projects that they've created within the tech ed. So, we'll have Skills USA students, we'll have super mileage vehicles, we'll have formula high school cars, we'll have underwater robots, we'll have on-ground robots, we'll have team problem solvers, technical draft. We're gonna have just this huge array of awesome projects with the students as the showpiece in front of these projects, just talking about what their experience this year at Ashwabanon or over their years at Ashwabanon, and, and just really making, trying to just give us some validation for, or give us some, I guess, for lack there of a better term, relevance to what we, what we've done. To show off our, yeah, their, their ability to innovate and be young innovators. But, yeah, so we're gonna have this event, and we're hoping to really have that be the center of good things. We have the whole N E W Manufacturing Alliance, all the members in the, in the Fox Valley invited to this event amongst several other people. And we'd just love for you to come and show your support and just help, help validate the cause, take a look at what we got going on and, and join in our, join in our cause, join in our effort. We got all forty-five students going to Skills. We're going, we're taking forty-five students tomorrow morning to Madison for three days for the Skills USA State Competition. And then, after that, we're going to the, to Elkhart Lake for one of our big formula high school and super mileage events as well. So, we've got a lot of things going on over the next two weeks right before the event. But the cool part about that is that the students are going to be able to report out with how they did, with their projects. It's kind of our, our main event. You know, our main events are happening now and then. This will be a real good summary of what's all happened at the end of the year. So, the kids will just have great stories to tell. So, we're looking forward to it. So, please join us.
And that's Thursday, the twelfth?
Yes, Thursday, the twelfth, and it starts at three-thirty and goes until six o'clock. And Brad, do you have, can we put, do you have the link for the website on the, on the? So, if you take a look on the invite, that'll summarize that. And I encourage you, not only, come, please come yourselves, but bring, bring another community member. This is, this is something that we need our, our community to buy into and to really be a part of. So, if you've got that person that's been saying, "Man, you know, I have this shop in Ashwabanon, we've been here for fifteen years, introduce me to anybody that can run a CNC machine and I'll hire them right now." If you know that person, bring them along because we, that's who we're looking to, to say, "Hey, look, we're, we're trying to do something about that, and, and we're trying to do something about that in an even bigger way than we already are." So, please be a part of that. So.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, our next discussion item is Curriculum Review Cycle. Jill?
Good evening. Curriculum work is never done. Each year there are conversations that we have regarding the standards, the materials that we use, the staff development that we're involved in. We actually want to know what we're doing and we want to know if it's working. The curriculum cycle has actually been built to balance budget costs. That's one of the things that Keith will always ask me every year, what are you adopting? And while that's really important as far as building for the budget, I think what's more important to point out, that curriculum is also dependent on another, a number of other factors that happen within the district or the state level. The biggest impact for us in our curriculum work has been working within the standards located, or standards that come from the state and come from the national level. Our curriculum cycle was in fact adjusted to accommodate the changes that were done within the Common Core standards at the state level. And then we've actually had a delay of two of our curriculum areas of Science and Social Studies because of the delay in the approval of those standards. So, with that in mind, here are some of the things that are happening within curriculum and instruction this year, coming up this summer and then into next year as well. We are in the review cycle right now for Social Studies, Health and Fied, Art and Guidance. By far, Social Studies is going to be our biggest undertaking as the standards that are aligned to our current curriculum were written in 1998. The D P I has projected that new standards will be released in, they're guessing about the year 2020. Now, just a side note, after the Common Core standards were adopted at the state level with the controversy that ensued, they decided to waylay adoption of standards in Science and Social Studies. So, that's been our biggest challenge. And especially so for Social Studies because their curriculum was actually reviewed in about 2008 and they're in dire, dire need of new materials. So, we've decided as a curriculum committee to move forward with the Social Studies work. We know that the national standards are well-written. And so, our work will be guided by both the national and the state standards. Health, Fied and Art and Guidance will need slight revisions. The guidance revision will include the adoption of the Academic Career Plan, which is a state mandate, and it's required for all students, grade six through 12. And that is to take place in the 2017 school year. And credit is due to our high school and middle school guidance programs and our elementary guidance counselors, as well as our high school and middle school guidance staff. They've already started working on that academic year, that academic career plan. And that is a big deal for our students. So, hats off to them for getting that going. World Language, they completed an audit, an audit last year and the staff spent last summer. And they're spending this school year revisiting and revising the curriculum based on the audit findings. The Spanish and German teachers, grade six through 12, have recently started looking at materials. And that would again be aligned to the work that they've done based on the audit. And I anticipate that we'll be coming to the board this summer and talking about materials for that new adoption. Science is our one of our, another one of our challenges because we've actually been waiting to write the science curriculum, curriculum for about two years. The state had announced that they were looking at the next generation science standards. And then again, with all the controversy around the Common Core, they backed off. But just like Social Studies, science can't wait. And so, we've been actually involved in a number of staff development opportunities. We've studied the next generation science standards. And so, we've gone ahead and we've started writing the curriculum for new adoption. And the elementary teachers have been working very hard and their job has been a lot easier because what we found is with the writing, the next generation science standards are very well-designed and especially so at the elementary level. It very clearly specifies what's supposed to happen at each grade level. And it's really innovative at how they've provided performance expectations, which actually guide what we look at as far as assessment. With that said, the elementary team will probably be coming to you in either May or in June with their curriculum and then their recommendation for an adoption. So, looking ahead to the next school year, we're going to begin an audit with the music department. And then we'll also be having the business, tech ed and family consumer science will come into review. And as a side note, it's always exciting to work with our tech ed gentlemen. As you notice, they've got a lot of energy and a lot of enthusiasm and they've got a lot of great ideas. And so, it's hard to contain them. Sometimes a curriculum cycle is very good, especially by them, because they're always coming forward with great ideas. And so, I'm looking forward to working with them this next year. We'll also be continuing our work with science at the sixth, 12th grade level because their challenge is a little bit more difficult when you look at how science is integrated. And we have to look again at sixth through 12. And there's not a lot of material that's been written yet to support the next generation science standards. And we'll also be spending a lot of time next year working on the writing of our kindergarten through grade 12 Social Studies curriculum. So, curriculum work, as I've mentioned, is a continuous progress. If we're not writing, we're studying, we're reading, or we're applying and learning more about each curricular area. Budget purposes may be the driving force behind some of the curriculum work that we do. But really, when it comes down to it, the heart of why we're in the curriculum process is to look at student work and student achievement. We're anticipating a lot of work and we always would like any extra help if you'd like to come and join us. Do you have any questions for me as far as curriculum work?
Jill, does the six-year cycle seem like the right cadence?
No, not always. And again, it really depends on the ebb and flow of what's happening. When I first came into the district, the state had started working on math and English standards. And they were very well-written and we were anticipating that we could follow within the curriculum plan. Well, then they stopped writing those and then the Common Core came in. And so, when I said no so quickly, sometimes six years is too long of time. We're finding that with science elementary is ready to roll, but the secondary, sixth through 12 is going to need that additional time. So, we do kind of have that ebb and flow where we may come to in five years or we may take six. Or in the case of Social Studies, we've had to back that up because there haven't been standards that we can look at.
So, how much do you take the material that you're reading and researching or the Common Core type materials and customize it and make it our own versus just taking it verbatim from these other sources?
What we do is the standards guide the process that we use. And so, we really don't have a lot of play, especially when you think about the assessments that the state offers us in English Language Arts and in math. The assessments are built off of the state standards. And so, we can play with them a little bit, but when you know you're gonna be assessed on it, you have to be careful. And again, I'm not gonna say that everything that we do is keeping in mind of the state assessment because the standards are very well-written. But we're kind of, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, if you may, because we have the state standards there to kind of tell us what we need to do. But then we also have other considerations that we want to bring into play. For example, cursive handwriting is probably one of the best examples that I can give you. It's, it's not included in the Common Core, but we've included it in our work. I don't know if that answers your question?
So, a lot, a lot of times you have to take the curriculum then and drive towards the standardized testing that's coming from the state.
What we do, yes, is take the standards, again, that come from the state, knowing that we're gonna be assessed on that. And we identify the standards that are critical and core and that's what we build our curriculum on. And then we purchase materials that are aligned or closely aligned to that material. In some cases, we find that there's nothing really out there yet or nothing that meets our needs. So, sometimes we have that waiting game until publishers catch up with the latest revisions and standards.
Jill, you said that basically the curriculum is budget-driven.
Sometimes, yes.
So, most of it, the budget-driven part is textbooks?
Correct.
Are you seeing more and more online?
The challenge, or what we're finding with online text is you still have to pay about full price.
Really?
Yes. And you, there might be an additional $10 charge.
But don't you get revisions then with that?
Yes, you do. But you still have to pay, if a textbook is $79 or sometimes 120, you still play, pay that plus a $10 additional fee to cover the electronic license.
And then do you pay with the changes?
No, we don't pay with the changes. That's a $10 deal. But then in six years, when the license is up, then we decide if we want that text and then we have to re-up. What we're finding is that the electronic text isn't really meeting our needs yet. They're starting to become a lot better than just a PDF or a picture of a page. Some of the new science materials that we're looking at are more innovative where you can actually have an electronic text and click on a picture and then it'll actually take you via video, maybe to a museum, or it might take you to an underwater cave or in the ocean in the, in the jungles.
Hey Jill, is that a one-time fee for the textbooks, even electronic?
Six years.
Is that, or is that good for six years?
Yes. What we do is we'll pay, I'll give you an example. A science textbook will cost $110 if we add the additional $10 electronic fee license. That price is 120 and that lasts for six years. And then if we decide that we want new material, and oftentimes we do, then we would pay another textbook fee.
How old is your oldest textbooks that you have out there?
Right now, our Social Studies group is working with 2008.
2008?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
And we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. And I give the Social Studies team a lot of credit because they are in dire need of material. But we really, we didn't know what to do. The standards are from 1998 and they're very, I don't wanna say poorly written, but they're not very well-written. And we just can't afford to wait any longer. We just feel that the national standards are, are really what we're looking at. We feel that the state will probably go that way as well. But we can't wait.
They'll be implemented then in 1780?
That's the plan.
Are we limiting ourselves teaching the standards? Are we limiting our kids' education by doing that? Or can't we educate to a higher level than that?
We can educate to a higher level and we have lots of discussions about that. As we research and we look at the standards, we're finding that they're very well-written. In fact, they're a lot more rigorous. The national standards are a lot more rigorous than the Wisconsin standards previously. And when you think about limiting our students, when we had discussions about handwriting and cursive within English Language Arts, really wasn't there. But we, our teachers value handwriting and that cursive writing, so they put that into the curriculum. So, they raise the standard. If we, if we feel that we can do better, we'll certainly add that in. But our conversations around the standards have been very positive.
I think one way to raise a standard is the realization of, you get the department of teachers around the table and they all read the same Social Studies standard. It may mean something totally different to Brian than it does to Paul or Jay. That's where it takes the time of the staff to sort of unpack those and come to an understanding, this is how we're interpreting that standard in terms of just development time to embed that. And that's what we're starting to learn is across the district, like a lot of places, we're realizing there's holes there where we really need to spend time really knowing clearly in the classroom from A to B to C that there's a consistency, the consistency in that focus is where you see, you know, consistent academic achievement.
I just don't want us to lose our identity as, and because if everybody's teaching the same standard, they might as well box it up and give it to you and teach it then. Because why, why have the individual districts doing what they're gonna do? You know, if you're gonna teach science, you're gonna teach science to this standard. Everybody's gonna teach it the same way, should be teaching it the same way if it meets those standards.
Well, and we'll, we will go about teaching it in different ways. Some teachers are gonna follow a textbook, some teachers will design a unit. We all get to that same end. But one of the biggest comments that comes out about looking at national standards or Common Core, whatever, is the fact that we want to make sure that our kids are at least on the same playing field. When you look at the model academic standards, they were given a D, I want to say, back when they were evaluated by, against other standards. Minnesota, Michigan, Massachusetts, all had higher expectations. And then we are sending our children out into the world of work and they're competing against kids that have a much more rigorous standard. And they may have gone further in their education. So, at some point, the core was developed to level that playing field. And then again, good discussions around the table, we can make that determination of where we want to go within the curriculum or within the standard.
I just don't want to limit ourselves, I guess. Yeah, I don't want to teach to something, I want to teach behind it.
And we have found that in our discussions, we're actually, the standards that we're adopting are much more rigorous than the state of Wisconsin. So, we're actually stretching. And it's been exciting and great conversation. And later on in the agenda, you'll find that we're coming back to talk about additional time for teachers to actually talk more about the standards and talk about what they're instructing and that whole staff development piece. It all blends in to all the curriculum work that we do. And when we come back, you'll, we'll talk about the holes in our science curriculum when we come back and talk about elementary. That's been some really good work. And, and our program leaders and our committee, our committee members do a phenomenal job.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to action items. N1, Alumni Blast. Mark?
The Alumni Association is, as I mentioned earlier this evening, that last year, last August, we put on the 50-year celebration. And we had such good positive responses from that that they wanted us to see us continue on with it from a public's view. But it seemed like a nice way for classes to get together for the reunions, a good community, networking time, people have fun, get together. And so, we're continuing on with this as far as the Alumni Association in conjunction with, working with village staff and school district personnel. One of the things that I wanted to do is bring forward a request, it's under an action item. The Village of Ashwabanon is, is putting all their, their staff time as far as putting it together, all their park and rec staff and everything, moving all the picnic tables in, cleaning it up, all that kind of stuff. And last year, it was right around $2,000 that they had, had budgeted for. That's what we're budgeting this year for is about the same amount of people that were there. And I'm requesting that, that, seeing if, what your thoughts are on it. Last year, we had three different groups make about a little over $5,000 apiece from Jaguar Backers, Alumni Association and the Education Foundation. We're changing the structure on this year to emulate, celebrate the peer, how they do things as far as their funding of the staffing that's there and everything. But there's still, the core things are still there. We have about $10,000 in cost right off the bat. And I'm requesting that the school district match the village funding of $2,000 for this next year until we can become self-sufficient and, and make this thing an annual event through our budgeting process, you know, this year and everything. And I think after this year, if we have, if we have the same revenues, we have the same expenses as we did last year and everything, we project that, you know, if we, we're gonna be making, you know, roughly the same amount of money and then we can be self-sufficient that village doesn't have to pay, the school district doesn't have to pay anything. But it shows that joint cooperation from the school district and the village like we have in the past and working together. So, that's what I'm here requesting tonight, informing you of what is happening and what we can, you know, what we, if we can financially support that as well again this year.
Brad?
Sounds good. He says it's a lot of, a big effort on, the village has been amazing with both last year's event and this year's event. And I think the school district, we're a little bit more involved last year because it's the 50th anniversary of the high school. But like Mark said, it's just such a community thing and it's a platform for all the class reunions and it's an option of the Alumni Association. And just like Mark said, showing that cooperation, that making a community and a village and a school district partnership, I think that just bodes well with how we do the event.
Committee's been meeting on this at least once a month since last year. As we get closer to the event, through the summer months, we'll be meeting at least bi-weekly and then it'll go to weekly right before the event. So, I mean, there's a lot of time that gets stuck into this by a core group of about eight to 10 of us that are probably doing it. So, I mean, it's, we're trying to put it on as low cost as possible by, by getting sponsors and that sort of thing. And that's, that kickoff is gonna be happening in the next few days and through the next month here. So, we get, but we do have, I mean, it's April, or it's August 13th, starts at 2:00, runs till 10:00. We are gonna be having bounce houses for all the kids. We are gonna be having bounce houses for all the kids. The lake's gonna be open for free swimming for all the kids, again, or families, if you will. We have bands and DJ playing all day, Cougars and Big Mouth. We were all received last year. I think that they're the top premier bands in the area.
It's highly predictable. We'll have the best tasting Optimus corn, if not in the state of Wisconsin, but in the nation there too, so there's your Optimus.
It was really good last year, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, Mark, to your point, it really is a community event.
Yes.
And, you know, there's, the Optimus have always been friends of the, you know, the, the school district. And the Jaguar Backers, you know, have always been there as well. I forget who the third person.
Yeah.
Oh, the Aldation, yeah. So they've all been great supporters of the, the school district, so just add it in.
So we would need to have a motion, right? Any more discussion on this?
My first question is Keith, I mean, or Brian, I mean, where do we, I mean, do we take that out of the board?
Yeah, where would it come from?
Budget?
I think the board budget makes the most sense.
Keith?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna make the motion because I'm the one that brought this forward, so I need one of.
I'll make the motion to approve the two thousand dollars for the Ashwabanon Blast to match the village contribution.
And that would be a one-time thing for right now, right?
Yep. If it's something that has to come back forward, we would do that again, but I'm hoping we don't have to.
Wait a second?
I'll second.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The two thousand dollars, is that if spent, or is it a two thousand dollar direct contribution to it? Or, you know, how, who, who's the money going to? How's this all gonna work?
Well, as you, the, the Alumni Association is the one that's putting this forward. So it would be going to the Alumni Association.
It's a donation.
To put this on.
So we'd make a contribution to the Alumni Association?
To help fund the things that are tents, bands, that sort of thing. It's just the, the structure of the thing.
So I, I guess it would be in support of the Ashwabanon Blast, community-wide picnic.
I'm just, because there's not, from an audit standpoint, there's not an invoice, there's not anything detail to back that up is where my concern is.
We can give you an invoice if you'd like.
Having some detail to back it up would be a good thing.
Probably be helpful.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Will it always be the same groups that will have the money at the end?
No, the, the, the key thing to this is that, like, anybody that, any, the way we set it up is that any organization, nonprofit organization, they'd like to sell product there. They buy it through the Alumni Association. Let's just say it's Jaguar Backers. This year, they're gonna, they are looking at selling hamburgers, hot dogs, and soda, water. They give us, they give the Alumni Association like twenty-five percent of whatever their gross revenue is. Optimus, another good example, we don't, we usually don't have our, our youth groups selling beer. Optimus sell the beer, we're asking for a fifty percent contribution for beer revenue. Optimus is a community group that usually gives back to the community in the first place, but we've still gotta cover those expenses. Whether we have a hundred people at this thing and it rains all day, or we have ten thousand people there and we make lots of money. I mean, in someplace around, along the way, we need, we need.
People there.
You know, to cover that, expenses, and that's why Celebrate the Pier does it as well. Over the years, as the events grow and it's Celebrate the Pier, percentages have changed. So if, we have a group of frilets out of the pier, I believe, that sells shaved yogurts and stuff like that. Exactly. So I mean, they would give us twenty-five percent of their revenues. If, if the tennis team wanted to do bouillot, or they would do the same thing. Softball, I mean, they've helped us in the past before. They'd sell the bouillot and make it and everything. But just like everybody else, they would give us a percentage of that because we're the ones setting up all the security, all the tents, all the ice, you know, products, all that kinda stuff. So.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Possion carries.
Very much. Do you have what you need, Keith?
Okay.
Um, M two, no, I'm sorry. N two, policy update, second read. Brian?
Okay, like you said, it's a second read on this. I recall last month, we talked about, there was a question though that did arise and had to do with that thirty-two seventeen series, thirty-two seventeen, forty-two seventeen. Had to do with off-duty or retired law enforcement officers, you know, being part of this policy. Make a long story short, I met with Chief Dunning, and he shared with me a standard that we built into the policy. But in a nutshell, they require individuals to meet a standard, and it's, it's a, they have to regularly qualify to use that firearm. So that standard is now built into this policy. He has no problem if you build that into the policy. He understands the concern, the question you had. If you're interested in seeing the entire document he sent, I can rope this around to you, but it's, that's in a nutshell. I mean, they require them to be qualified. So you know they are certified, and they're also law-abiding. And as we know, in any profession, people can be removed from that profession for a lot of reasons. This kind of is a safeguard to sort of underline that they're qualified. So I'm sure they have to, in terms of shooting qualifications, there's an annual qualifier there. They have to keep their skills at a certain level. So regardless of the age, they have to qualify to be tied into this. So Eric seemed, Chief Dunning seemed to think that this was a good way to go if you tie that into this particular policy.
Mark, do you have some questions?
Yeah, down on that one, though. I'm glad that you clarified that.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, I'm gonna start out with zero one hundred.
Okay.
Um, on the last page, as far as voting, and there's several other spots in here as well. I'm not a hundred percent in favor of having voting of members, whether on the phone or Skyping. I don't have a problem with members.
Participating?
Participating, but I think that it should be to the people that are there that, and, and I know that there's differences of opinion on this, the village level, they feel differently on it than I do when I'm minority there, but I don't know how everybody else here feels on it.
I feel the same way.
So I mean, I don't, I, I, here, the way it's defined in here, that it's, you can vote from telephone or by Skyping. And I don't, I wanna throw that out there to the rest of the board and see what their opinions are.
What's your reasoning for not, either one of you?
I just think that it, you have to be there to make the vote. I, I think that at certain levels of government or in different situations, that I think that it's appropriate to have somebody there. That's, it's, I know that technology's out there right now that you can do it. But you could, you could theoretically not be at a meeting for six months or whatever and vote every single time and not be there. And is that fair to everybody else that's sitting here? I don't think so.
I don't think you can see the environment, what's going on during that meeting either. You know, you can't get the feel of, you know, if it's something that's gonna be very important. Most of the time, we pretty much are in agreement with it, but there is other times when discussion does happen and you don't see and you don't feel what's going on as far as what's in the, in the crowd or other board members, you know, how they feel things. That's why I agree with Mark. I think you, they can participate, they can put their, you know, their thoughts into it, but I think that you should be here in order to vote.
Well, I, I disagree. So I'll be on the other side.
That's why I say it's, it's, there is.
You've, you've got the technology. If something comes up, if you have to be away for whatever reason it might be, and the technology is there, I don't see why you shouldn't use that technology and, and have the opportunity to represent as you've been elected to do, represent the voters. Why would you take that away just because, because you're not able to be there physically? Whether it be due to an illness or something that's taken you away from the community.
I don't have a problem with that, Brian. I guess if, long as there's some limitations put on it. You can only do it two meetings or whatever in a row. I mean.
Well, then it should probably be in something like this.
I don't disagree with that.
And that's something we could change.
I'll agree with that statement. You know, we should be able to, you know, embrace technology. You know, and be able to use it, but to your point, is, is very valid. You know, it should not, it should be the exception, not the rule.
Right. And I think you, you mentioned government at a certain level. You know, this is pretty grassroots. School districts, school board is, is not Congress, which some of those people probably should be away anyway.
Yeah, but they can't vote if they're on the phone or whatever.
I, I know, but you, and I think you get to a certain point where it maybe makes more sense, but I don't think this is that level. I don't think what we're doing rises to that level.
Okay, so village level, it's okay to call in, and county, it's not. State, it's not. That's where you think the level of.
I, I don't know exactly where it should be placed. I, I just think embracing the technology, utilizing the tools that we have there. And if it's a situation, and I'm not saying that it can be, don't show up for any meetings and just vote in, in Skype or something. But when rare occasions or situations arise and you want to represent to the people that elected you, why take that away?
And I kinda think, we had this topic five years ago, so we have not changed for five years. This topic about not using Skype, I think it's there, and I'm on Brian's side. I think everybody's professional on this board. We wanna be here at our meetings, but if something takes you away, if it is something medical, and you have to travel out of state, and you have to travel and be gone for a couple months because of something medical, your here, your job here is to represent the community, and you have an option to do that through Skype. You know, you can't be here in body. I think we should open that door up.
So would you guys be in favor of, of limiting that to two months in a row?
Or to, or to a situation that is discussed with the board president or with the administration, depending on the situation.
I think we should define that, not leave it up to discretion as a board because I just.
Then how about no more than two in a row, if that were to be the situation?
At least maybe start there.
Sure.
You know, we can always change it later.
And I don't suggest that it happened. I mean, to my knowledge, I can't think of more than a couple of occasions in the four years or so, five years that I've been around here, that it even would have applied. But I know I had one, I know Barb, you had one. And, you know, I don't know, other than a policy that, that would limit, would limit that, I don't see why it couldn't exist.
Whatever you decide to do, of course, you have the priority to come right back as a board if you feel it's being violated and just revise the policy. And I agree with you. I mean, I know the last five years, is it not, is that an issue? I'm not saying Barb, you may raise a good point. Somebody develops an illness and they need to travel for an opinion or something, I mean, things can happen.
The thing about it is, on, on the village board, we've got an older population, and they like to go out of state for a month or so at a clip. And we've got a little younger crowd here, but it, it's a totally different population there than it is, you know what I mean? It's a.
It's a different level.
Yeah. And I just think we have to, I don't, I'm not, and I respect everybody here, but it's when you don't, you know, when something else happens and it's not the board that comes in.
Well, I think it'd be the exception instead of the rule, but, you know, why limit ourselves, you know, at this point? You know, the, you know, a lot of times with that, you know, I don't know, conference calls, you know, Skype, you know, the technology's not quite there yet where, you know, you can really hear what the atmosphere is. You know, within a group, there's a lot of static. Skype is the same way. You know, so I don't think we, the technology's quite there yet where we can just make a blanket statement that we should go to it. But, you know, I don't think we should limit ourselves here either. You know, if something comes up, a medical situation, like you said, you know, why not?
Well, then, if you wanna, if you, that's your philosophy on it, then I wanna take these one at a time. Because if, unless there's limits on here, I won't vote in favor of it.
Yeah, we could do that.
So, I mean, I, I, I would be more than willing to vote in favor of it if there was every other meeting or something like that. But if you say not limit yourself, then I don't have a problem with that. I'm not gonna, you know, but I'm not gonna support it, I guess.
Sure.
And we could go two, three years without it being an issue.
Right.
And if it does become an issue, you know, like, like Brian said, we can address it at the very next meeting.
Mm-hmm. So.
So would you have a motion that you'd wanna make, or?
If you wanna make my motion, it's not gonna, they don't, they're not in favor of it, so.
Well, I guess we're, well, I'm saying that, you know, we could put that two-month contingency on there or not having it more than two months. I guess I would be in favor of that. And then, you know, just have the flexibility later on, like you said, to, you know, if that's being abused, or if we perceive it as being abused, then we change it.
Then we change it. Yep. So go ahead.
If you wanna make, let's make a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion, and we add, you know, not more than two months in a row.
There you go.
Add it onto the voting section of policy zero one hundred.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jennifer, you got that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Possion carries.
Zero one forty, vacancies, the school board.
Yep.
Uh, everything else on there is okay until you go to the second page. You go to E one, I think that should be eliminated, and it should be, what, what it should state instead of that is it goes to the next election. Just because I, I don't think that we've ever given the board president that much authority before, and it's never happened. I mean, if that was, if that would've been in place in nineteen eighty-nine, I would not have been on the school board.
Just to give you a little feedback, it's not uncommon, though, Mark, for boards and other school districts to do that, especially when you have a five-member board, the decision you can make by not allowing that, here's the other, the other side of the coin, is you end up having a four-member board.
Yep.
Now, we don't have, it's rare for us to have a split vote, our history, but I'm just saying, you can have motions then that get tabled, for example, or two and two. And depends on the period of time. It could be a month, and then, then the position is filled. But, you know, obviously, it could be also an entire term that you would go with four people. Just, just so you're mindful of, of that decision if, if you go there.
Certainly, it's gonna all be in our best interest to try to fill it within sixty days.
Have we ever had this in the past?
Yes.
We did.
We have.
That's what you're saying, happened in nineteen eighty-nine?
And after that as well. This happened twice since I've been on the board.
I was trying to figure out your age.
Yeah. I can tell you almost exactly.
Is that the oldest one here? I, I mean, it, it's, it worked out okay, even if it was a four-member board after that, you know, if we couldn't agree on it. It just, it, it, and it never, it never, one time we filled a spot, and one time we didn't.
And if you would have multiple people interested in. And if you would have multiple people interested, there's nothing to stop a board from interviewing and having a process before you appoint. That's certainly up to the board to do that as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of ways to approach that if that happens.
Because I would think the foundation of a board is that you would never have that situation where one person would be in charge of-
Right.
Doing a thing without everybody else's input or action.
Involvement, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so my motion for zero one forty is to remove E one and put in the next election, the school board election, I should say. It's filled at the next, by the next school board election, or at, you will.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? So, is there a certain amount of time limit on that? So let's say that, that somebody's elected, and then six months later, they're unable to fill the present position.
If, if that case happens in six months from now, that we, uh, somebody decides that they're gonna get off the board, it's December, that's perfect timing to let the village, let the, let the-
Have a special election?
Let the public fill it in April, because it's, I would, I would be in favor of letting this, not even going through the motions and doing it, because the advantages of being appointed by the board and going into the next election, they have to be elected anyways at that time, because it's fulfilling an unfulfilled term. So, why, why get them on, why get them on board with two months and give them that much of a head start, if you will, over that next, the, the, the other people that might wanna-
So what would happen if it was af- if the vacancy occurred after the first of the year, when nominations are, or, you know, the ballot's already established?
Well, then, I mean, that's, we, hopefully, then we fill it, then.
Then we'd have to, yeah, exactly. We'd have to fill it, whether it took sixty days or ninety days.
Because then they go till the next April.
Right. It would take, you know, seventeen months or sixteen months, something like that, prior to another election.
Just to challenge your comment, Mark, or kind of offer another opinion or perspective. If the board would choose and have a process, interview people, and then appoint someone, you know that's always gonna be short-term, a couple of things happen there. The public obviously also has the opportunity to observe that person in that position, knowing they're going to be up for election. So it's a way for you as a board to certainly work with someone, but it's also a way, it's sort of an audition to the public, if you will, before that person would officially go on the ballot. So I think there's, there's advantages there for you just to consider and think about, versus run maybe several months with four board members.
Yes, I mean, it depends on the, the quality of the school board members that you're, that you get, that you're interviewing at that time, too. So, I mean, you know, and you don't wanna give a, that advantage, I guess, going into that election to somebody that maybe not quite the public really should have. I don't know if that means-
It does, I think the public, you want the public to vote on who they really feel-
Exactly.
Is gonna do the job the best they can do the job, so proof should be in the pudding, so to speak, in my opinion. It's, it's a challenge, probably, but, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, we have a motion out there. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
I'm just, I had a bunch of them, and there was like, I'm just going through them now this way, and, uh, weapons policies, I think Brian had a good explanation on that. If he wanted to, to take those, I would be okay with that. I would make a motion that we approve policy thirty-two seventeen, thirty, forty-two seventeen, fifty-seven seventy-two, and seventy-two seventeen. Is that correct? Almost.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
No discussion?
I, I, I'm here. You know, the, the one thing that wasn't all that clear to me is that definition of weapon, um, which is items approved by the principal. And everything else, we have the superintendent approve in most things. And that was about the only area where we wanted the, the principal-
What number is that under?
Um, it's-
It's one of the two.
Uh, let's see.
It's on page two of thirty-two seventeen.
Thirty-two seventeen, okay. Page two.
Not that I wouldn't want it that way, but I thought, you know, it might be better to be consistent.
I think the idea of it was because it would be in the building, where Brian's not in the building.
Oh, okay. Okay, that would make more sense.
Oh, um, I'm just going down the list here, and I would like to add thirty-one twenty-point oh six to that as well.
Thirty-one oh six.
Thirty, sorry, one twenty-point oh six.
To your motion?
To my motion.
Dr. Reese, second there. I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, so what do we have left? Thirty-three forty, grievance procedure. I believe that these are all taken care of in our contract or, or negotiated handbooks and stuff, and I don't think that we should even have it in policy.
Remember, our handbooks are not negotiated at this point.
That's fine. I don't, I, I wanna stand by that, I guess. I, I just, I, it's, it's not a policy.
I would tend to agree with Mark on that.
I would recommend we double-check with legal on that, because I think this is a policy we need to have at the board level.
This was something that came to the board, like statewide.
Yeah, because you're the final decision factor in the grievance.
I know, but if it's in our handbooks and everything already, why do we need to double-state it in policy?
That might, that's subject to legal opinion, Mark.
Yeah, so I would have, that's what I'm saying. I think it's okay to remove it if, if our attorney says okay.
We just table that one, then, until next meeting.
That's what I'd recommend. Verifiable. That would be forty-three forty also, correct?
Correct. I think that was, um-
Is there any that we have not covered?
Yeah. Um, policy fifty-one eleven, uh, fifty-two hundred-
Eighty-three ten and eighty-three thirty.
And eighty-three ten. And eighty-three thirty.
Are you making a motion, or do you have any?
Sure, I'll approve those. I don't have any questions on those unless somebody else does.
So that would be?
Fifty-one eleven.
Fifty-one eleven, fifty-two hundred, eighty-three ten, and eighty-three thirty. Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of our policies?
And, I mean, I just, when I was reading this through and everything, I know that was part of that, and I, I mean, if it's something that our hands are gonna be tied on, we can, but I still feel that it's in there.
Check it out.
I would say the other band of having that in policy is, the only that is revising or reviewing the legal wording on it to make sure we're in compliance with if the law would change. And if we would remove it from the policy, you lose the legal review from the law on a regular basis.
By yes, changing it.
Yeah, if we would remove it from policy.
Right. Okay. Um, number three, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, calendar changes. Joe?
First of all, I'd like to reference a couple of documents that were sent to you email today. There were some modifications made to the calendar and to actually the information item that you were given. Back in February, we came to the board workshop, and also at the board meeting, we began discussion about the possibility to add professional development days into the calendar. We've received feedback from teachers regarding the need for additional time to collaborate, to look at student data, to look at all the curriculum, study the curriculum work that's been done, to look at student achievement, to look at instructional practice. There's a lot of things out there that we're asking teachers to do, and we feel that the additional time we would give teachers would be very well-used and beneficial. When we came to the board originally in February, we talked about adding full days into the calendar.
Do you mind that?
And we continued discussion outside of the board meeting. We've gone back to the administrative team, and please jump in if I forget something. We've talked about how we can move forward with this in a couple of avenues, thinking about, first of all, half-days that are currently within the calendar. We have a number of half-days that are built in for parent-teacher conferences, or in one instance, teacher work time. And one of the things that we found in looking at the data, and the principal shared that, I think, is the fact that on half-days, a lot of times, we have attendance issues where students don't come to school. So couple that with the idea of having staff development, we thought, well, it could be a win-win if we took some staff development time in the morning in those half-days, and then in the afternoon proceeded with parent-teacher conferences or their work time. We would still have good staff development time and have less impact on what happens in structure of the classroom. So the new proposal that we're sharing with you this evening would look at three additional staff development days. Four would be half-days that we would seize, and then we'd add one full day in May to give us the staff development time. We could always use more, but we felt that this would be a good starting point for us to see, to see if that would be enough time for us.
Originally, it was five, right?
Originally, it was five full days.
Yes.
So we're, we're asking, the ask is going from five to three total, and to get to the three, there's one full day that's, that is in there, but the other four days are currently half-school days. I talk to the principals, and I hear about a student attendance rate of twenty to thirty percent absence on those half-days. I, I'm gonna put my hat on as a parent, much more palatable as a parent to have that full day, because you're already, your schedule's already disrupted with a half-day. That's my sell on it, and it would be a huge step for us to gain that staff development time. So it is a, it is definitely a compromise from what we proposed two months ago, from the five days, and then we have two days built in currently, as we have last year. So instead of seven, we're asking for those three days, which gives us a total of five. And we intentionally avoided December, where Christmas and events, there's certain months there that it would make sense to not even, not even go there, because there are a lot of days that were out of school in that month, obviously, with Christmas break and so on, winter break.
So in the calendar that we look at here, it's the one with the star, right?
Correct.
The half-day, the star plus the half-trangle or whatever?
If you're looking at the red.
November eighteenth, seven oh?
Pardon? You're looking at November eighteenth, or?
Yeah, uh, yeah, November eighteenth, January nineteenth.
And June seventh.
June seventh.
Those would be the half-days. Where's the fourth one? There should be a fourth one, isn't there?
It doesn't say in the C three.
I think it needs a little bit of-
It's the twenty.
Is that?
It's the sixth, it's the tenth, the eighth, thirty is-
Yeah, we have early release date, but nine, twelve, and eighteen.
All I see is-
Yeah, the eighteenth, that's a full student day for the elementary and middle.
So you're, you're talking about September thirtieth, then?
September thirtieth. We had a half-a-day in the afternoon already, used the data.
Okay.
So in the morning, we would take that and make that a full day for staff development. In November-
November tenth.
Right, November tenth, half-days, parent-teacher conferences, and we would make that a full day with staff development in the morning. And January twentieth, there's a half-day for teacher work time, it's the end of the semester, so we would take the morning for staff development. And then in March, March eighth-
March eighth.
Is parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon. We would take the morning.
So what would January nineteenth be?
With the star nine-
That's a star.
Early release.
Early release.
Yeah, that's the semester. And if the star means on the nineteenth, it's a full day for grades K through eight, there's an early release date for nine, twelve.
What's our school, same, same district, same?
Is that the same as November eighteenth?
No.
When does November eighteenth start?
Is a full day again, early release for nine, twelve.
May for twenty-seventeen.
Oh, so it's end of the, then early release for-
Was, I should say. He won't, this would be, it's coming here.
It just, I didn't, it doesn't say in your key, you know, what the star is.
Well, it's showing down the key, the full day.
Full day for the elementary and middle.
Oh, okay.
And then it's an early release for nine, twelve.
Okay.
Any discussion on this?
Thoughts? I think it's a great start, I mean, to put this back in, and, I mean, you are, this is in regards to the eight minutes a day that we're adding?
Yes, that would be the budget implication, is based on that eight minutes. When we take those three days that we're reducing student contact time, we have to make sure that we meet the requirement by the state, and high school would fall short. So adding in that eight minutes would keep us within compliance.
And that would be just at the high school, correct?
That's correct.
That would put the fourteen hundred and forty minutes?
Well, we exceed, it's a question, how far do you exceed when you're gonna have snow days and, and delays and things like that? So this year, we got pretty close at the high school, because we have a testing day for ACT, we have the, the testing days in January, the testing days at the end of the year. So we, we want, in order to have it over two days of buffer, so we can have two snow days and a late start or an early release, or two, we need to add that time. And then the high school day matches the middle school day, we'll be able to share bussing and do some other things as well.
Smart.
Okay.
Well, it seems like a win-win. You know, we help all the parents, and then we give the teachers additional time for in-service, so.
And it was really interesting, we had discussions also with, with staff, and the one thing they've said is, please, when we have that learning that you bring in, whether it's a staff trainer, is please give us that work time also, to reflect on what you've learned and just collaborate. And so we've listened to what the teachers have had to say, too, so we'll make sure that there's a nice balance in there.
Okay, um, can we get a motion on this?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I hope they've got enough stuff to do those days.
Well, yeah, what's that gonna be for people my age? Because I'll be graduating next year.
Ain't bad luck there, Patrick.
Well, you're gonna be announcing my name anyway. That would be eight, eight minutes a day of more learning, right, Mr. Nelson?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the Cormier parking lot bid. Keith?
Good news.
Always good news.
We got, bids came in below our expectations for Cormier parking lot resurfacing. I just wanna be clear, we've talked a lot of different options at Cormier, and, and this is a part of our long-term plan at Cormier with the parking. This is the existing parking lot, which if you've been in it, you almost need to have a four-wheel drive, because there's some big ruts where the garbage truck picks up the dumpster, there's some other issues. It's, it's old, it needed to be replaced. What we're able to do is grind that parking lot in place, and it creates more base, so it'll have more structure to it. In addition, we're expanding the parking lot to the north to add another row of parking, and we're taking out an area where, if you've been in front of Cormier, they put cones up to keep cars from going in in the morning. We're gonna put curb on, curb and sidewalk there, so we don't have to put cones up every morning, and we don't have to worry about cars driving in there. As I mentioned, the bids came in really well, below what we had- As I mentioned, the bids came in really well below what we had expected for this portion of the job. We recommend, uh, the company is MCC Incorporated, uh, their bid was fifty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and six cents.
What did you have bid for, or what did you have budgeted for?
We were estimating close to seventy thou, or around seventy thousand for this. So it'll free up some additional money in the five-year or ten-year building budget, but just realize, this is the good news, there's also bids that come in a little above sometimes we, so we're not going to change that budget because this came in under, the next project might come in a little over. That's just the way the construction world works, so. It, it's good news because now we have thirteen thousand dollars or, I'm sorry, seventeen thousand dollars in that budget for the one that comes in over to help us so we don't have to rate another budget. What we'll do at the end of budget years, we've got the fund forty-six set up now, so when we have a positive variance in the maintenance budget overall, we'll put that money in fund forty-six, which then will go to a future building project. Remember, that's the five-year timeframe that we have to get in there, but it'll help us put some money in there. This project will happen this summer if you approve it, uh, probably during part of summer school. I've already talked to Mrs. Arena about that and she has plans for what they're going to do with our parking lot and how they're going to handle the summer school that happens at Cormier, which is the getting ready for the 4K and getting ready for kindergarten.
My understanding is that Tom split this up so he got more favorable bidding?
That appears to be the way it worked, we broke the, the project down and we're breaking it down into sections and this came in really competitive. We were really impressed, especially when you look at the major referendum projects and how the bids came in there. We were, I was worried we didn't have enough budgeted. Tom worked really hard with the contractors and, and made sure he, if you set a project upright, contractors are able to bid you more competitively and if that's the case here, I believe.
Great. So Keith, how long after this starts that it's going to take?
How long does the project take? I'm going to estimate it takes a month, I'm going to push them to be less than a month, but I think we're looking.
They'll be ready for school, start. Or for school?
Yeah, it will, it will, it'll be ready for school, no problem, I'm hoping it gets ready long before school.
Okay, thank you.
Make a prove, make a motion to approve the bid.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed? Motion carries. Thank you, Keith.
It's good to have good news once in a while.
Keith, we're covering right back at you.
Okay, budget. We don't need any action on budget here, I, I just think it's important for you to see the updated budget and where we are as we get into the next couple of items when we look at what's happening staffing-wise. I'll give you a quick review of the law as it, as it affects you and teachers on budget. If we do not issue a non-renewal for finance purposes or layoff to a teacher, we don't give a preliminary approval this month, then the teacher's contract will automatically renew by state law. So that's why it's so important to have this meeting here and then have another meeting by the second Monday in May so we have to issue a preliminary notice before the end of April and before May fifteenth, we'd have to issue a final notice if we were going to non-renew for financial purposes or lay off a teacher. So that's what, what we're doing here is we're talking about budget just to see where, so you get an update on where we are because we have some partial layoffs as part of our whole budget balancing, but the picture has improved significantly from the last time we talked budget. So more good news, enjoy it while it lasts because next budget update might not be this good, but we're, we're, our open enrollment numbers are, are doing okay, they're not way beyond our expectations, but they're in the ballpark, so we're improving there. Uh, we've had some, uh, really good news on our health insurance and that has helped us tremendously a, a, as far as our budget, uh, and it's allowed us to minimize the number of layoffs. We have a couple, we have a couple of partial layoffs, which will be the next item. But before we go to that, I'll ask if there are any budget questions.
Where's the bottom line at now?
Where is the bottom line at now?
For prioritized budget balancing items, six total.
So you need a little over six hundred thousand dollars, or we need a little over six hundred thousand dollars in budget reductions to balance the budget. Based on enrollment projections, we're showing a little under five FTE of reductions, so that gets us about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that. So then we have, I'm sorry, that gets us two hundred and fifty thousand, so we have about three hundred and fifty thousand of budget reductions. But I look at the first three items you see on the prioritized list, those are things we would do regardless because they just make sense, the energy savings by doing LED retrogrades in, in fixtures. Um, we reduced our utility budget by, by locking in rates on our, on utilities on gas, so that saves us money. Technology E-rate money, we, we were approved on E-rate rebates on some of the technology equipment. We would, there's no reason not to do those things. But we're able to go through and where we're looking is, we're in item number four, the ten-year maintenance plan, where we were planning on delaying items, we're able to bring a lot of those items back into the budget. And even with the items that were contributing to the referendum project, we're able to do the majority of our maintenance plan and we will monitor that as the year goes on. If we get more open enrollment students, if something else improves our budget, we're able to add those projects back in. So we'll, we're, I'm hopeful we'll get there. We haven't reused the techno, this allows us not to reduce the technology budget, allows us not to make a lot of those changes that we had talked about earlier. So it's, it's a much better picture than we had just a month ago.
When would you anticipate that second phase at Cormier being done then?
Well, that's a good question, it's something we can talk about. Um, we, that phase is going to be the much more expensive phase. So what we, what I would recommend is we would look at doing that the following summer because it's a two-part process. One, we have to create a door on the north end of the building so there's some indoor constructions and work there. There was a door there years ago, we'd have to recreate and recreate the hallway. Two, we'd have to create the parking lot drive-in and drop-off area for parent drive-up drop-offs and that's a fair amount of blacktop that we'd have to create and we'd have to work through the process there. So in order to plan this and get pricing similar to what we got in this first stage, I think it would be one of those things that we would want to be bidding out in winter, this coming winter, for the following summer and then split the budget half this year, half next year, which is how we had it planned this summer. So we would put the, put money back into our tech, our maintenance budget and be able to pay for half the project out of the sixteen seventeen budget and then the other half of the seventeen eighteen budget, do it over the summer.
I don't know if we ever got it, Keith, but is there any way that on the next agenda we could put a Cormier site plan together for us so we could see what that is?
See the whole plan?
Yeah, I don't know if I ever saw it.
We saw it a year or two ago.
It's been a while.
It's a, it's a work in progress and, and the other thing I didn't mention is the third part of that process is a village part where we've worked with the village and the next time they rebuild Cormier Road, they're going to create a bump in for the bus drop-off area. It works now, is it optimal? If you ask Chief Dunning, no, it's not, but it's workable and, and the village has been great to work with on this. They understand the need, it's just a matter of, if they're going to rebuild the street anyway, the costs are much less than if we have them tear up a street that's recently rebuilt. So it is a three-step process and the third step is years in the future.
It's happening soon, isn't it?
Well, Broadway, when was Broad, Broadway, we go.
Cormier.
No, we're talking about Broadway.
You said it's Cormier.
I'm sorry, by Cormier School, it's on Broadway, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought that's in this year.
No, it's the Cormier, Broadway side of the school.
Yeah, I just want to refresh myself with that because it's been a while since we've saw it.
So if you want, I can email it out to you guys, you can all see it or we could have it on.
Put it on agenda, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we'll be here in two weeks anyway.
Yeah. Need something for that agenda.
All right, um, so any other questions on budget?
So we'll go to six then, partial layoffs.
So partial layoffs and more good news, we've been able, as an administrative team, we do everything we can to avoid layoffs, we know how much it affects people's lives. It's, it's, it's one of the, you know, the way you keep good staff is that you don't do these things, but we know it, it's going to be unavoidable at times. But the good news is the fourth layoff on the list, I'm going to ask you to pull. We have found a way to keep her and actually recall her in some of the partial layoffs she had last year by reshuffling things and, and changing how we allocate the careers class at Parkview. We were able to recall Patty Christensen and we're, assuming you approve all this, we'll go forward and issue her a partial recall instead of a partial layoff. So what I'm proposing is we have three partial layoffs. Mitch Rotier at the high school would be reduced point seven five FTE, so three-quarter of his time we would reduce. Kathy Bruski at the high school would be reduced point four two and Rachel O'Brien, who's an ELL teacher at Pioneer, would be reduced point two five or a quarter FTE. But that is her whole contract, so for her, it's a full layoff, it's a partial FTE layoff for us. So those are the three that we're looking at.
Do those teachers, if they're, they're teaching, have options to also, um, fill in? You know, as far as like, uh, subbing?
Yes.
Absolutely.
But the likelihood of keeping someone that you've just eliminated seventy-five percent of their position?
But we do have some, some, and the, and the fourth person that we pulled off the layoff list, that's what she did this year. She subbed when her schedule allowed it because her time at the elementaries is much more one day, two day, three day, four day, five day, it changes. But the high school, the, the time would be more possible to do some subbing.
So do they get sub rate for that then?
Yes.
Okay.
And then again, this is not an accident stone that these people won't be coming back.
We can always recall later, we just, if we don't issue the preliminary layoff before the end of the month, they're back at their same contract.
These are strictly enrollment-driven?
Yes.
And again, favorite enrollment, could change things.
Could change, I, I don't want to be optimistic, I mean, we're not going to be adding a point seven five teacher at the high school in one subject area based on open enrollment, that would take a tremendous amount of open enrollment. But some of that, like the high school adjustment is part the middle school and we're shifting a middle school teacher part-time up to the high school. So we try to keep as many people whole as we can and look at either low seniority or low performer. This is, these are all seniority-based, so I don't, I want to be clear on that. None of these have anything to do with these teachers' performances, they weren't selected for that reason. All things equal, we fall back onto seniority and after these three were selected.
Oh, just also, I have those two high school positions, when they were originally hired, they weren't full-time positions. So those positions have fluctuated up and, up and down. So, um, both of these people were not hired initially with full-time contracts when they were initially hired, so.
It's kind of the nature of the beast.
They've been positions in flux that are going up and down.
So there are times when we don't reduce FTE where we have that at the high school because there's more course requests in one subject area than another from year to year, it changes. So it's part of the high school staffing life, unfortunately.
Okay. So Keith, how are these individuals notified?
The, the principals have all talked to them and let them know and they've been notified, they, they, we, we've, difficult conversations always happen face to face, so we always make sure we're talking to them and that they hear it directly from their principal and they know what's happening with it, so they're all, they're aware.
All right, um, we need a motion for this, correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the list of partial layoffs.
Preliminary notification, no, it says that on there.
Oh, it says that on the top here.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Just make you aware that then in the May meeting, I expect we'll have these three then for final layout.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed? Motion carries. And our last action item, um, Keith, are you handling this?
I am handling this also.
Extended contracts.
So these are staff members where we have needs outside the school year and as we've worked with the board, the last, what is it, fifteen years on this, where we've, like, where we've tried to reach a balance between trade-off days and paying extra for days. In some positions, for example, the counselors at the high school, we have students we need to schedule over the summer, we need them in to work on those things. So we, we strike a balance and it's half trade-off days and half extra days that they're paid. So I, I think this is as tight a list as, as we can get while still serving our students. The cost, as you can see, isn't huge, I don't want to say it's nothing, but it's, it's, we're a little over ten thousand dollars and, and I think this is a good place to be on these extended contracts. Very similar number of days or identical number of days to what was approved for this school.
Okay. We get a motion for this?
I'll make a motion, we approve the extended contract request as presented.
Second? Good second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Good night tonight. Board and superintendent communications.
I have nothing further.
Nothing? Okay, future meetings, um, our next board meeting will be scheduled for Monday, May ninth, six-thirty at the district office. Uh, we need an adjournment to executive session, roll call.
I'll make a motion to adjourn executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
No, roll call, no.
No, roll call, thank you.
Bande Creek, aye.
All run aye.
Tronsen, aye.
Ben Lanin, aye.
Lanin, aye.
Okay, thank you.
We need adjourned at eight-thirty-six.
Thanks for that update there, Patrick.
You're set, Jennifer?